All right, guys. It is 6:45. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting July 19th, 2022, special meeting of the City Council to order. I'll ask that Ms. Hoffman take role, please. Ms. Elmore. Mr. Cahill. Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore. Mr. Hermes.
Here.
Mr. Doan.
Present.
Mr. Meyer. Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Nicely.
Present.
Mr. Nipper. Ms. Reckers.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Thank you. All right, so I just want to do a really quick mayor's report, just to update you on an event that Emmy and I were able, we were invited to attend last week. One of our newest businesses that is, they sit in one of the plazas right in front of Silver Lake Recreation. Their name is AHS Innovations Lab, and they've recently been acquired by a company called High Tech. And what this organization does is they create robots that assist with the logistics industry. So they are helping companies like Gap and Amazon fulfill their online orders with utilizing robots in the supply chain. And this is an extremely amazing facility. It's over 20,000 square feet, right off of Kenton Lands, amazing facility. And it was a company that was started here in northern Kentucky. The owner of AHS, his name is Dave. He is originally from this area, originally from Campbell County, lives in Cold Spring. And he has, he has such a wonderful story to tell of why he came to the city of Erlanger. Emmy and I were talking to him, and he was expressing how his responsibility as a business owner is to take the tax burden off of the residents of Erlanger. And that that was one of his driving factors for coming to the city. And I asked him, I said, "Did you, did you know that we had reduced property taxes for seven years in a row?" And he said, "Yeah," and he smiles, and he's like, "That's one of the reasons I'm standing here." So I just, I say this to you because people are noticing. People are paying attention to the decisions that are being made here for the past seven years, and they're paying attention to the decisions that are being made right now. What he also told me was, he drives down Crescent Avenue now on a regular basis, and he sees Train Depot Park alive with moms and children. And he's like, "There was a petting zoo out there the other day." It's so incredible that you do these types of things for your citizens, and you really harvest a wonderful community environment. Then he talked to us about the park improvements at Silver Lake, because they are right there. So he is making an investment in the city, and he is doing so because he's recognizing that the decisions we're making right now are making a huge impact in our community and, you know, motivating to people to want to be a part of it. And that's so cool. And I left that, that event like on fire, just so excited. So I just wanted to share that with you all. So we'll go ahead and go into legislation. Mr. Gatlin?
Thank you, Mayor. We have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlanger ordinance number 2542, and the budget adopted thereby for the city of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2022, and ending on June 30, 2023. You can see attached to this document is a spreadsheet which details the amendments that were done as it relates to the vehicle for public works, additional money for firing MS vehicle, and the park improvement fund.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Mr. Hermes, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please. Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer. Ms. Reckers.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore. Ms. Kyle.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So we'll go ahead and open up our City Council Caucus meeting.
I think we might have to wait 10 minutes, Mayor.
Oh. Wow, you guys are so efficient. Look at that.
Or at least eight minutes here, nine minutes.
Right. All right, so we, we will pause, and we'll come back in just a minute. I have stuff. Sure, yes.
Like last month's stuff, you know what I mean? Rats.
And then this one is for the concrete sidewalk project.
Just jump back there. No, I just, I need to download the meeting packet, and I can't get, can't, it just, come on.
All right, guys, it's 7 o'clock. So we'll go ahead and call the City Council Caucus meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the nuisance ordinance. This is going to be talked about by Jack Gatlin and Chief Raider.
Chief Raider is up first, and his team.
The orange button.
I know there has been some talk in the last couple of years about the nuisance ordinance or coming up with a nuisance ordinance. I was kind of on the line, whether we needed something, do we not need something? And the last year or so, we've had several calls where the residents are, they're not upset with the police department, they're more upset with the judicial system and the judges and the lack of space in jails. So, you know, who do they call to complain about that? It's, you know, the local police chief. So I can give you a specific example. We had a pretty good drug complaint that we forwarded on to the Drug Strike Force. And it was actually within 1,500 feet of the school. So it was a pretty big deal. The strike force did their thing, they did their investigation, which can generally take a little bit of time. And sometimes the residents don't understand, you know, that those type of investigations take a little while. So they keep seeing people coming and going from the houses, they kind of get irritated, and they don't think anything's being done. Well, finally, you know, we swoop in, we do our thing, we serve the search warrants, we arrest the people. And, you know, lo and behold, they spend a week, two weeks in jail, and then they're back out. This one in particular, when they got back out of jail after two weeks, they began selling again from their house, and the traffic continued to come and go. We did the same thing, search warrant, we arrest the person. Then the fiancee or ex-wife, I forget who she was, picked right up in his tracks and began selling from the same house again and again and again. So, you know, to the average citizen, it looks like, well, Erlanger Police isn't really doing anything. We're doing everything we can, but our hands are tied. So it, it kind of hit me that, you know, we can't really control the jails, we can't control what the judges are doing, we can't control the sentences. But we can control, hopefully from a local city ordinance, those people not living in Erlanger anymore. Lieutenant Ashley put together a spreadsheet for me with calls from January 1 until, I think, June, was it June 6? I think it was June 6 of this year. Already, we have probably three or four residences that we have been to four or five times for assaults, fights. Animal complaints are another big one, that, you know, we kind of rely on animal control to handle, you know, a vicious pit bull or a vicious dog, whatever the case is. And a lot of times that comes back and it looks bad on the PD because they don't think anything is being done. And they think a lot of times animal control's hands are also tied, and they can only do so much. So I know there was some talk at the beginning about this maybe being more of a rental house type situation. But from my perspective and what Jack and I talked about today, this isn't just a rental house issue. This is, you know, an issue from everywhere on Greenfield to Sherborne with the dog complaints that we've had the last couple of weeks. So I'm just kind of asking council to at least look at this. You know, we'll be glad to answer any, any questions that you have, but I'm just asking for something that I can give my officers that has a little more bite so that we can handle the nuisance areas that the court system isn't really allowing us to handle. Do you guys have any specific questions, anything that comes to mind?
Chief Raider, I have a quick question. When would a house be seized when you keep going and busting them for drugs? Is it after the second time or third time, and that may start cracking down on some of these?
So what Jack and I talked about this morning, just a, just a quick spitball. I think we had five citations and/or arrests for certain, I think assaults were on there. Jack, do you have the?
Yeah, so I think the idea would be is that we would include it as a part of our code enforcement process and a part of our nuisance ordinance. So we would follow that same enforcement mechanism. But the idea being is we don't want to get in the way of people calling the police for EPOs, DVOs, domestic violence. We don't want to punish those people, right? But, but there certainly are, and if you look at the spreadsheet, there's certainly, there are properties that are frequent offenders. So, so what we did is we defined, or our proposal is to define criminal activity as a nuisance under the nuisance code. And it would be any building or premises where law enforcement officers have on more than five occasions in the preceding 12-month period cited or arrested. So that's even more than just showing up, you know, for a welfare check. That's cited or arrested for crimes involving prostitution, assault, controlled substances, alcohol, out there gambling, or illegal aliens. So the idea being is, and we can maybe tweak and broaden that direct list of the crimes that we're looking at. But it would be on the sixth citation or arrest at that property within the preceding 12-month periods, over a 12-month period. And frankly, our normal code enforcement process is then they get a warning. And then the discussion that, that we had internally today was, you know, a remedy in the normal code enforcement process is they have seven days to remedy the event, right? You cite someone for grass too high, they have seven days to cut it. We probably would broaden that to basically be, the remedy would be no further criminal activity of that type within a 30-day period, and then they have no issues. So it's really a seventh or eighth is at what point then you're going to trigger the nuisance ordinance fine process, which is, I think it's $100 for the first offense, $250 for the second offense, $500 for the third offense. Built into our current nuisance ordinance is that any nuisance ordinance violation, once you reach $3,000 in fines, so if you think about that, that's going to be what, 10, 11, 12 arrests or citations in a 12-month period? Then council can look at potentially foreclosing on that property. So I really think this is going to be, it would be rarely used. It's another tool to alert the property owner or to get the attention of the property owner. And it's not necessarily rental property. I mean, it could be a child, grandchild, aunt, uncle, mother that's the problem with the property.
Correct.
Boyfriend, girlfriend. But it's, it's just a remedy. It's just a, you know, I think it's a challenge for operations to have 10 properties that get calls, I don't know, four or five times a week in some cases, right? I mean, and these are, these are very small incidents.
Right.
Or small amount of properties that are creating large problems. Does that answer your question?
It, it does. I was just, not downgrading a loud music nuisance, but if someone's dealing drugs and you're constantly going after them, drugs is huge. Would that seize the property? Of course, if it's rental property, you would want the owner of the property to know, but does something happen?
Well, again, there would be no seizure per se. Now, the police certainly have seizure powers in their own right with drug activity, that's a different beast. But under the nuisance law, after $3,000 of fines, we would have the opportunity to foreclose on the property. Now, the problem with that would be is the remedy is going to be to pay the fines. It's always the problem with any nuisance violation. You know, I don't, I don't think it's going to be a perfect solution, but I think it's just an opportunity. I mean, I, I'll ask you, I mean, if we had this, are there property owners that you think we could get their attention, that could deal with the problem?
Yeah, and I, the, the house that I was giving the example of was a rental house. And the owners were not aware of anything going on until the PD actually did go to seize the house through the Commonwealth Attorney. And then, you know, magically, they, they were upset, and they weren't too happy about it. So, yeah, I think that, you know, if this is something that we as the police department can either approach the owner or, you know, the, the company that owns the, the residence, whatever it is, at least that would be more eye-opening and say, you know, this is what we're seeing, these are the implications of us coming out here time and time again. I'm just, like I said, I, I mean, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, but I'm just looking for a little something else that we have in our tool belt that we can use on some of these problems in the city. Sure, somebody.
I was just going to say, I think notifying the property owner as soon as possible because they may not know all this activity, and to find out that your property might be seized is kind of harsh when they may not know what activity is going on. So I think letting the property owner aware of the times, you know, not one time, but you know, if it gets into two or three before something that happens, because they probably in their lease have where they could evict them, and they probably would, most property owners, I think would.
And I agree, but we also have run into situations where some of the low income, the low-income HUD housing rules, I guess, I guess it's guaranteed money sometimes for some of these companies, and they tend to overlook our responses because they would rather, you know, get the guaranteed income than maybe have that place set empty for a couple of weeks, couple of months. I'm not exactly sure how that part of it works, but we have run into that in the past also.
But I want to clarify something. I mean, any seizure of a home or property is not through any ordinance or civil action of the city. That would be through the criminal KRS statutes and through the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. So I mean, that's really not anything that we as a city have anything to do with. Our officers through the Commonwealth Attorney sometimes can utilize that.
I just have a couple of questions. I just want to make sure, because I printed it out, is it chapter 104 is the, is what we're referring to as?
Yes.
Because it doesn't actually use the word nuisance anywhere in it, and I just want to make sure that we, everybody's on the same page as far as what ordinance we're
Yep.
looking at, because I was looking at the fines, and I just want to make sure I was looking at the right thing. The only other thing, or a couple of things I was going to say. I would want to make sure that the citation or arrest is in there because I would hate for this to turn into a situation where you've got two neighbors who don't like each, or maybe a neighbor's angry, and they keep calling. And all of a sudden, we're fining people because we've got a neighbor who's irritated about something, and it's like, well, I'll call the police five times, and the sixth time. I just want to make sure that I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't want to get, I mean, obviously, if it turns bad, we would get in the middle of it, but that's for other reasons. I don't want residents using this as a way to punish their neighbors.
Right, and I think the way that it's written, I mean, we would have to, you know, issue a citation and/or make an arrest, and we're not going to be issuing citations, generally speaking, on anything that didn't happen in the officer's presence. So, I think that part would be covered.
The only other thing I was going to say is, kind of going on what Ms. Nicely was mentioning, I would like for there to be some type of language in it that at least we notify the home, the owner, of the property owner, whether it's, you know, the tenant or the person who lives there's house, if it's owner occupied, or if it's tenant occupied. I would just want, whether they do anything or not, that's up to them, but I would feel, I feel like it's our obligation, and we should know who those people are because they have to have a business license. If it's not the, if it's not owner occupied, and it's a landlord, or tenant occupied owned by landlord, then we would know, in theory, who the, who the landlord is and be able to give them some type of official, you know, notification. Hey, we've been to, we've been to this residence five times, the sixth time this is what happens. So, I would just want to see some language about that in there so that we kind of cover ourselves, and we don't have a landlord coming back to us and saying, if I had known about this, I would have tried to evict them, or whatever. So, that was, and the only other thing is, do we have, I mean, I'm not asking for addresses, but do we have the data? I know you mentioned a spreadsheet, but I'm sure the spreadsheet probably includes addresses, which we shouldn't really be seeing. But I would like to know as far as, you know, the number of calls and what their reasons are. Is there any way for us to see that without the addresses?
Yeah, I mean, we can do that.
Yeah, we can circulate that spreadsheet and just take the addresses out.
Right.
Yeah, it's easy.
You know, I think, I agree with Mrs. Nicely and Mrs. Jasper Lucas, and in the whole point about trying to make the land, the property owner aware early. If we don't do that, then we probably need to make sure that we follow state statute on evictions. At least our timelines run with that, because, you know, once, once the property owner becomes aware, once that sixth, you know, the sixth incident happens and the property owner is cited, they're probably going to start to try to evict that tenant at that point. If we say, you know, there can't be another incident within seven days, but the eviction process is 30 days, it's really not fair to keep going back and keep hitting them when they're doing everything that they can lawfully to try to get rid of that tenant, but the timeline, you know, we'd be just punishing them for no reason.
Sure, and I, I mean, I think this is, like all ordinances or KRSs, there is, you know, some leeway and, you know, officer discretion in how, you know, that would work. I don't disagree. I mean, I think that's a valid point. And I want to make sure that everybody is aware to, this isn't something, you know, that we're going to be using once a month. This is probably something that we may use one or two times a year. I mean, thinking back on the last couple of years, there are a couple that come into my mind, but this isn't something that, that we're going to be dealing with on a, on a monthly basis, so.
Could be something that we could build in, that the filing of eviction tolls the Because the reality is, depending on which district judge you get, and eviction, you know, I mean, you've got to give someone 30 days notice.
A month.
But, but, I mean, they, they could go to court and get another 30 days, another 60 days. I mean, eviction could take 90 to 120 days. It could. But, but in the same token, in an owner-occupied property, I don't know if we just want to automatically give somebody four months, you know? So, I think it could be something that if it's rental property, will toll the enforcement period while they're, you know, actively seeking to evict or something. Would that, would that be something that would work?
I think so. I mean, I think it would work to shorten that period from the sixth, you know, the sixth incident to, you know, to continue to fine them if they're made aware earlier in the process.
I mean, another angle could be if it's rental property, what if we just notified them after two or three and not wait to the five or six?
Right, they could, they could start the eviction process before they get that fine.
Right. You know, and maybe it's notification, I don't know, after the second?
Right.
I don't know what, I mean, I don't think first, I think that would be too hard to do, but maybe second?
For illegal drug charges, is it really, is it really unreal, you know, unrealistic to contact them after one? Like, if I were a landlord, I would, and there was illegal activity happening that resulted in an arrest for drug charges, like, I would want to know as immediately.
Yeah, but I mean, don't, don't you need a, don't you really need a conviction first? I mean, what if there was something?
Awareness of it, right?
If it's an arrest or a charge...
I mean, there's at least probable cause at that point. Matt can tell you, if you get cited or arrested for a drug charge, I bet the statistics are that about 99% of those people end up found guilty or pled guilty, unfortunately. I get the whole due process.
Well, yeah, I mean, but, I guess, I mean, I understand that there was probable cause to arrest them, but in what country are we living in that we're assuming that they're guilty right away?
We're not assuming, and we're just taking that as one of five charges before we cite them $100.
I, I'm just shocked that...
I'm just asking for transparency for the residents who may not know. I know we have a lot, we have landlords on this, on this governing body. Like, I feel like they would want to know, I don't mean to speak for you guys, but like, I would want to know if I had properties in Earlanger, if there was arrests involving illegal activity, whatever the case may be, that would, just for that awareness factor. And build, you know, I may have some three-strikes rule in my own lease, I don't know, but I think six or seven times, like, this is, I mean, I know you're saying using it once or twice a year, but I feel like the landlords would, I'd want them to be notified sooner than that. I just feel like that's just my two cents.
As long as we think we have the staff in place and code enforcement in place to notify landlords every time there's drug charge at the property, I mean, that, that might be a lot.
Yeah.
I was going to say, two times, maybe not the first. I mean, I don't, I mean, I have no idea what the statistics are, but are there a lot of people who've only been arrested once and not a second time? I mean, I have no idea, but I feel like the second time is, is fair. I get notifying them the first, but I also do wonder if it would be a burden on our, on our staff. We can always reevaluate if we don't feel like it's effective.
Right.
And, you know, it's still up to the landlord to do something about it or not do. I mean, they don't have to do anything. We're just saying, as a courtesy, we would like for you to know this.
I mean, there are some landlords that do proactively come and do an open records request for whatever the address is. So, I mean, there are some that are already doing this, just not very many.
How many do you think it would amount to a month if we did it on the second citation or arrest?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it totally depends. I mean, during the summer months, it may be, it may be quite a few. I mean, just this weekend, I think our guys made nine or 10 felony drug arrests, Thursday or Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Yeah, Friday, Saturday, we made, we made nine felony arrests for drugs.
And those would be, those weren't people who were in vehicles?
Some of them were.
Okay, so those obviously wouldn't necessarily apply.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the case.
Okay, I'm just, yeah.
Some of the ones that were in the vehicles were in parking lots of known drug areas.
Okay.
We knew the apartments that they were visiting.
Oh, okay, got it, okay.
So, give us a ballpark though. So, if we did a second strike where we're notifying a property owner after two drug charges or other crimes we've enumerated here, are we talking?
A week?
Yeah, how many a week do you think that would be of a second offense on a property?
One. One week, probably.
So, we're talking 50 notifications a year, 50 to 60 notifications a year?
Possibly. Yeah. Is that it?
So, what does counsel want us to do with this? Do we want to craft an ordinance that kind of deals with all these issues and discuss again at the next committee meeting with the finished ordinance? Does that, so that gives you all something to look at, and then we can internally kind of discuss the, how we handle this from a code enforcement perspective, right? Because there's always two beasts to this, right? You have what you all want done, but then we need to make sure that we have people in place that can actually do this and that we can create a system where we can track it, and, because it will kind of create its own logistical issues.
Right.
So, let us take the feedback tonight and come back with a proposed ordinance at the next caucus meeting. Yes, Ms. Cal?
Quick question. Does this include codes violations also, like grass and vehicles?
We wouldn't be changing that.
Inoperable?
No, this would be just for criminal activity.
Criminal, okay.
Yeah, now, we already have for the normal codes, once it reaches $3,000 worth of fines, the ability to foreclose.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're not doing anything to change anything else. This is just for properties that would have five citations or criminal arrests within a 12-month period.
Okay, thanks. I would like to see the thing about the vicious dogs in there too, because I know, I hear a lot of people say, you know, animal control shows up, nobody answers the door, they couldn't find the dog, you know, a variety of things. There's a variety of reasons that animal control can't do anything, and, but it's an, it's an issue a lot.
Yeah, the only thing that I would just caution is, I think the spirit of what I'm hearing from counsel is we want a citation or an arrest.
Yes.
So, I don't know if we would ever get to that amount of vicious dogs, because I think the issue would be if the dog isn't there, when someone shows up, nobody's going to get cited or arrested. So, I mean, that, that could be its own.
Well, and I think that the animal ordinance actually says, after a certain number of citations, they, they take the dog. I don't think they get that many chances either.
I don't either.
I don't know.
We just passed that new unified animal control ordinance of Kenton County, where we're all kind of unified in Kenton County, and I don't know off the top of my head, but I think you're right. I think it's like after two or something. There's not, it's not a real long leash that people have, no pun intended.
I will work on that spreadsheet, and we can share all the data with you guys without the addresses. Lieutenant Ashley probably already has that done.
All right, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Jack. Next item up for discussion is the wage scale ordinance. Mr. Gatlin?
Some of this is a housekeeping issue, and some of this is a change. I will defer to Kara or the mayor on the dollar amounts and the pay plans. What I want to discuss is a couple of changes in Section 3, and I want to just kind of discuss my logic for that and how I think it is consistent with the KRS. So, in Section 3.0, and I don't know if Mr. Meyer remembers this, or a couple of other members of council, we established position counts about five to 10 years ago. It was a tweak in the pay plan ordinance. We had thought that we had removed those, and what I mean position counts is it literally was a table that said, these are the positions. You remember that, Ms. Kyle? And somehow that came to be. And several years ago, when we did the recodification, we thought we had removed that. We never did remove that, and that table is still a part of our codified ordinance. And frankly, we haven't followed that table in several years, and we don't think it's appropriate to have a table with position counts that, that's a part of our ordinance, because it's just, it's, there's too much flexibility with positions and with people coming and people going. It's just, it's not practical. So, the first thing is removing that. So, you can see in Section 35.05 that the job titles and positions counts should be repealed entirely. That's just that table. Now, the second thing that, that we are proposing is, again, sometime about seven or eight years ago, in one of the pay plan ordinances, it was established that job descriptions and personnel policies would be established by the Earlanger City Council through municipal orders. And there are, you know, in my opinion, I think 95% of the job, job descriptions should be at the discretion of the department heads. I think if somebody is a lieutenant in the police department, I think the chief should be able to define what those job descriptions are and what those job duties are. I think that's clearly an executive branch function. There are five jobs, however, which are established by statute, and the council has already established ordinances establishing those, and those are the non-elected officials. So, the non-elected officials, which are city clerks, city administrator, chief of police, fire chief, the statutes are very clear as to what those job duties and responsibilities are, and they also specifically say that the council establishes that, those ordinances. And we have done that as a city. So, any descriptions, modifications, enhancements that the executive branch would do to any of those five statutory functions would have to already fall within the purviews of the ordinance and the ordinances that have already established those positions. So, you know, as an example, because I think it's what several of you are concerned with, is the city administrator position, and I have this opened up, but I closed it out when I was looking at something else. You know, we have established by ordinance as a city the job duties and responsibilities of, for the city administrator. Like the statute, it's pretty vague and it's pretty open-ended. We, in practice, as a city, and I don't know how this has happened, have established about a 10-page monstrosity of requirements, descriptions, educational requirements, things like that for the city administrator position, which frankly is way beyond the scope of the ordinance that has long been established by the city. And I think my position would be on that, is that so long as those job descriptions and, and clarifications of those five statutory, non-elected official positions don't conflict with the ordinance or statute, I certainly think the executive branch can modify or enhance or clarify, right? So, as an example, I want to just pull it up, what our ordinance says for the city administrator position. So, our current ordinance, which we're not seeking to change, and the ordinance has been around since 2016, basically says that the powers and duties of the city administrator of the city shall be as follows. Subject to the general supervision of the executive authority of the city, the city administrator shall be responsible for the efficient administration of all affairs of the city. The city administrator shall plan, direct, and coordinate through appointed department heads the various services and activities as determined by the mayor and/or legislation adopted by city council. The city administrative officer shall also serves the city ABC administrator. So, all we're seeking to do, and I'm using this as an example because it's, I think, the relevant one tonight, is we just want the executive branch to be able to, as this ordinance directs, various services and activities as determined by the mayor, to be able to write in the job description whether GED is required, a college degree is required, what's required. Those enhancements and modifications should be something that comes from the executive branch, but in no way are we even allowed to, as the executive branch, to do anything that would conflict with what already is established by ordinance and statute for the city administrator, the director of public works, firing MS chief, police chief, and director of economic development. Those are all ordinances that were passed in 2016. Those are all ordinances that were passed in 2016. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I don't have a question, just as it pertains to this, this ordinance that's changed, that you have on the screen. Does that mean we should inherently strike out in that paragraph where we've already removed, established by the city council through municipal orders, the portion of that that reads, "and non-elected office"?
I'm perfectly fine with that, Mr. Meyer.
So that this, okay.
Just so that it's clear that there's no conflict with the ordinance that's already established.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I can tell you internally, when we sat two months ago and went through all of this, we had the statute and the ordinance up as we were kind of retooling several job descriptions. But again, I think the light tonight is on those positions. But from a practical perspective, I think our bigger concern is when we have a lieutenant's position, or a police clerk position, or a maintenance worker one position, that those department heads can kind of freely adjust those job descriptions without having to come back to council for a municipal order. Any other questions?
So the existing ordinance for the city administrator position, that's six pager, I don't think it's 15, I think it's six.
You mean the job description?
Job description, yes.
I was being a little facetious, it's long, I mean, part of what we were doing was cutting it.
So, but there was a posting today publicly for, with a, with a, with, where the supervisory responsibilities were adjusted to not oversee all personnel, but only that of general government, IT, finance, and economic development. So to correspond with this supervisory responsibility changes, we have a wage scale council has been presented with that has an increase in salary of 7%. And I understand inflation is very real, we're all battling that. But for less responsibility than the prior person who served in this role.
So I want to, one is my answer to your question, and the other would be the mayor. Number one, I just want to make clear to everybody, in the current ordinance, it doesn't specifically say that the city administrator is in charge of any department heads. In fact, it specifically says that they coordinate through appointed department heads. So I think there's some discretion as to how far that supervision can go with the current ordinance. The second part of the question would be for the mayor.
We went back to the original intent of the ordinance and the statutory requirements of what the CAO is in charge of. The purpose of our change is, there's many different reasons, okay? So listening to all the department heads and understanding what they need as a supervisor, as a leader, as a boss, as a manager, and understanding that there are several departments that can report directly to me, and it cuts the middleman. It cuts that line of communication out. So, for example, and I'll just be very blunt, when there is a police situation, if there is a shooting of some kind, in the past, it would, it would ultimately have to come to me. However, it would go to Matt Kramer first, then Matt Kramer would have to come to me. Then if I asked any questions, it'd have to go back to Matt Kramer, then he goes back to Kyle Rader. Then they come back, and it's, it was absurd. So what we have discussed for multiple months is how do we make this more efficient? How do we make this a better situation for all of us and cut out the middleman for these types of situations? Hence why PD, Chief Rader, would report directly to me. If we go back to the ordinance, there is no, there is no requirement that the CAO has to have supervisory role over top of PD. However, in the ordinance, it does talk about supporting and planning and coordinating. So that is still a part of the CAO's responsibility. They do still help coordinate and support every single department head. And that's why there was no change in the pay, because they are supporting. They are not necessarily putting in the Tenzinga evaluations for those individuals. However, they are still to make sure that they are giving the department heads what they need to be successful.
I see what you're saying, and I understand that 20 years of policy needing to change for efficiency purposes makes sense. But this new role will have, will be, where, will be, I'm looking at the other department head salaries in this grid, and there will be peers versus subordinates of the new city administrator. And I think it doesn't, it doesn't sit very favorably to me, looking at this, saying, yes, I understand there may be a little bit, a little bit more responsibility, not necessarily the Tenzinga elements and overseeing all personnel. But there's a, there's an $11,000 difference between the proposed new wage scale. And I think that is, I don't see how that's, when they're going to be peers and not necessarily subordinates, how that's really, how that's, how that looks, right, to the public.
But it's not that they're not in charge of supporting them. We're going back to the original ordinance. So yes, they're not having a supervisory role where they are the direct, the direct report. That's the only thing that's missing.
But everyone should be supporting everyone in the city, right? I don't think that that should have, that should come to the, have a.
But that's the CAO's responsibility, according to.
And I know you keep going back to the ordinance, but we know that the responsibilities are shifting. I'm just looking at it because I don't, I think it's, I think this may not sit well with the 100 and something employees we have in the city.
And I'll, I'll be flat out honest with you. This was created with department heads sitting in a room with me and Jack and figuring out, what have we done in the past, what's working, what's not working? And how can we make this a better situation for everybody moving forward? So I have only heard secondhand about this issue regarding the salary from Jack, who has heard it from somebody here, obviously you, or somebody else. I, this is the first I'm hearing of it firsthand. I have not heard anything from the department heads. They helped create this, they created it themselves. So I'm not sure if you're, have an example of somebody that has an issue with it or not.
I'm certainly not going to put anyone on blast, that's not my style. And I didn't speak to any, I didn't speak to Jack about this. I just happened to notice the significant increase, 7% over the previous, the previous minimum and maximum, where the responsibilities were much more, to less responsibility for 7% more. So it's just math, it's taxpayer dollars, and I want to make sure that what we're doing is good government. So that's my, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess the one piece that I, I come back to the line before, we talk about the plan, direct, coordinate. And there, and I guess, I don't necessarily understand what this will entail, but it says, the CAO shall be responsible for the efficient administration of all the affairs of the city. So it sounds like they still have responsibility over all departments, at least the way that this ordinance reads, even though we're removing that.
I don't think we're removing it. I think, I think being responsible for the efficient administration of the affairs of the city doesn't necessarily mean that that's my boss. I think it's different, right?
I mean, I see potential conflict there, though. One of the other things that I guess, I'm curious as to what other cities are operating.